To the five United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice.
Thank you very much. Call the February seventeen, two thousand sixteen town council meeting's order. Do have a couple other items to add to the agenda. One is a discussion about banning overnight parking in the town hall parking lot, seasonal ban, and also authorizing an additional, authorizing, authorizing an additional individual to use the town credit card. So the two items will add to the agenda. First up, public comment period. No comments, okay. We will then proceed to the first, next, first item on the agenda. Resolution to accept the minutes in your packet from January sixth, two thousand sixteen.
So move.
Second.
Motion to second, all of the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, extension, motion carries. Next is a resolution, authorizing the supervisor to sign the agreement to spend highway funds. This is an annual, an annual thing that we do every year.
So move.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion. All of the favors signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, extension, motion carries. Next, a resolution to approve change orders for Georgetown construction for the ten bay tee hangar on airport project number, the EC dash O one, number seven nine oh two dot nine zero. Additional amount of six hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents for electrical. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second, second, I'll assess the discussion. Frank, what's this for?
Um, there was a, the mercury switches, uh, we had to have mercury switches on the door, which there's a lock, and they weren't there, um, so when those are in place, the door won't open. But without them there, the lock mechanism's in place and you could try to open it up and damage obviously the door or the lock.
Okay.
And then we also added, uh, the town, or I, I requested for some outlets to be put in the, at the end of the, the new hangar, there's a small garage area down there. So I asked to put some outlets in there because we stored a couple of tractors in there, diesel, obviously they gotta be plugged in through the winter, so. They put, they put a couple outlets in for us.
Okay.
So it's, it's labor and equipment, pretty much.
Okay. Any discussion on that further? All of the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, extension, motion carries. Next is a resolution, uh, for the supervisor to appoint panel of the town clerk as a marriage officer. For the length of her term as town clerk, which is, uh, be retroactive January one, two thousand sixteen through twelve thirty-one of two thousand nineteen.
So move.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. We've done this before, town clerk's been marrying people for a long time. We had another marriage officer last year, so it's nothing new here. All of the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, extension, motion carries. Uh, resolution to, uh, authorize the supervisor to sign a contract for shared highway services on behalf of the town casino.
So move.
Second.
Motion to second, for discussion. Frank, want to explain this to everybody?
Basically, this is if we wanna work for the village or any government entity that, you know, along with moral truck or they wanna borrow a truck from us, it just gives us the flexibility to do that.
Okay, yeah, typical house to be big to do all the time. Okay, any further discussion? All of the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, extension, motion carries. Uh, resolution to authorize highway superintendent to advertise for summer health.
So move.
Second.
Motion to second.
Frank, how many you think you're gonna need this year?
Well, I'm gonna go with three for the highway, one for the airport, but, um, obviously we brought up the, you know, concern with, um, Potsdam's airport going down for the three months.
Yeah.
Picking up additional business, you know, I, I don't, that's something we need to look at when we get closer. Potentially maybe s- one more body at the airport to help with everything that's gonna be going on there, so.
Okay.
I guess we gotta see who kinda comes into the fold was, and wants to be there for the three months.
So as of right now, it's three and one.
Three and one, yep.
Okay, any further discussion? All of the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, extension, motion carries.
I, I guess my point is it would free up one of our regular employees to be able to be more available for more, the paperwork side of it, and, uh, keep them off of more, I guess, that's what I'd be looking for, so.
Uh, oh, I forgot to update, uh, Councilman Carboni, Councilman O'Shaughnessy, or excuse for tonight's being there out of town attending the annual meeting of the New York State Association of Towns. Uh, and they're, they're on their way back from New York City, so they weren't able to make it tonight. Uh, resolution, next is to authorize the highway superintendent to post roads.
So move.
Second.
Motion to second, we do this every year, Frank?
Yeah.
What do you about a little bit?
Typically, we, uh, in the springtime, we post roads, uh, we limit the wait that can travel on our town roads, and typically we do it between the beginning of March and being in the first of April. So it's kind of a common courtesy that if somebody owns a, say, a gravel pit on one of the roads, they don't haul during that period of time because of frost coming out of the ground and damage to road.
Okay, any further discussion? All of the favors signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Uh, updating the scene of the world hospital, I have nothing new there. I haven't talked to Mr. Walden in a week or two, ten days, so I don't think there's anything that's changed since we last discussed it. Other than, well, the hospital board hasn't yet this month either, have they? Do they meet Monday? The hospital board meet Monday? This coming Monday, yeah, not last, okay, no, okay. Uh, we have, uh, budget transfers and amendments in your packet, the library, the town, the rescue squad.
They don't have any transfers.
No, we don't have any transfers. Just amendments or not?
No.
No, we don't, okay. Warrant, we have bills.
So move.
Second.
Motion to second, pay the bills, so is any discussion?
Careful tunnel.
All of the favors signify by saying aye.
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 No, nobody to oppose, there you go. Again, you have financial reports provided by the supervisor and the bookkeeper, the budget officer, for January twenty sixteen for revenue and expense and here to date. The, uh, committee, the, uh...
Uh, Joe, can we, we should, can we talk about Air Methods, our meeting that we had with them?
Sure.
Um, Air Methods is a, basically it's like Life Net, right now they, they, uh, they're stationed out of Potsdam because of the runway being shut down, uh, project they have going on there. They're looking for, to set up shop in Messina from, uh, May, June, and July. Uh, we had a meeting with them last week, um, myself, Joe, and Al, and, um, basically, um, they wanna, we're gonna charge them, we'd like to charge them, we're board's approval, a thousand dollars to Redfield Hangar, and a thousand dollars to rent the Troutman House for that period of time.
That's a thousand dollars per month, right?
Per month. And if everybody is okay with that and we can get it approved, uh, Eric's working on contracts or leases that, though, they're, they're looking for us to get to them as soon as we can because they wanna make sure they can move in by May first.
Where did we come up with a thousand dollars?
I came up with a thousand dollars. Normally, the, the old hangar is what we charge Cape Air during the winter months, and I'd set a thousand dollars for the house.
The, um, just some background, Tom, and for the public as well. Uh, Potsdam is closing their runway to do some work on it this summer. Uh, Air Methods is stationed at Potsdam Airport, um, they obviously need a place to operate out of, and they've asked to operate out of Messina Airport. So we took the amount we charged Cape Air for their winter lease, which will be ended by then, um, and, uh, what we traditionally charge them, uh, and then the company, which is a thousand dollars a month, and the company also was talking about the need, they have to stop this thing twenty-four hours a day. So they need crew, flight crew quarters, and they talked about bringing in maybe some camper units or some kind of RVs or something. We said, hey, we've got this house, right, and actually inside the fence of the airport, the airport ground, that we ended up buying lies a couple of years ago, and it's vacant. So they said, well, let's take a look at it. I couldn't agree with you, what'd they say when they said?
They were impressed.
Pretty impressed, so.
To them, it was the Taj Mahal.
Suppose we could bring in an RV or something they gotta bring in.
I guess the accommodations at Potsdam are as, are as plush.
Now, the house, of course, isn't furnished, but they're gonna make accommodations for that. So we're, we're gonna lease in the house as well, and again, Frank thought that...
Will they pay their own utilities still?
I assume we'll pay the utilities, right, if we're charging a rent.
So, we'll have to pay that a thousand dollars a month.
Utility question, come up.
No. The only thing it said is, I said, obviously there's no cable, there's no internet, so it would be up to them to get that installed. So they would pay for that themselves.
So we're just paying out just leave for three months?
And water.
And heat.
Well, shouldn't be any heat in the summertime.
Talking, May, June, July.
I think our heating bills right now is like fifty dollars, I mean, I know I keep it down, but. I don't know, it's up to you guys, that's why I'm bringing it up because they're looking for us to get them some kind of leases so they can get moving on. They want their legal people to look at the lease, and they asked us if we could get them as soon as we could to them, so, I mean, if you wanna go eleven hundred dollars to cover the cost of...
Do you want me to propose that they include the utilities? That they pay for the utilities, that we can just keep the service in our name and just give them the bill?
Well, the houses there empty.
Right.
It's, they're not generating a penny of revenue. They're gonna lease it for a thousand bucks a month, and it's gonna cost us a couple hundred bucks for utilities.
I don't even think it, I don't...
Not even that. I say maybe a thousand bucks, and we'll, we'll cover the expense, my opinion.
Okay.
They, they brought two pilots with them, who are currently residing in the, whatever they, accommodation they had in Potsdam. And as they said, they were very impressed.
I guess what they did is part of their art building, they, they, they petitioned off a section of it, and that's where they stay.
Okay.
They made a room or something for them.
Okay.
They provide great service, I, I'm, I'm fair with that.
Yes.
I'm, I'm fair with that, I'm fair with a thousand and a thousand.
Okay, so thousand and a thousand, and we're good?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm good, I can't speak for that.
Aye.
Okay. So then we need, I need a motion to, uh, lease, uh, the hangar and the house that the town owns on airport grounds for a thousand dollars each per month for the months of May, June, July.
And they, and they, in the contract or the lease agreement, they wanna, they also wanna basically some verbiage in there saying extension if, if needed, so.
So they can request an extension?
Yeah, in case the runway project goes beyond its release.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll send it back.
Motion to second. You have a lot of discussion? All of the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We should, and the, the motion should be inclusive, that we're gonna include utilities at the house.
Right, yeah.
Okay, that's our discussion, let's make sure this is out of the resolution.
Let's try to be fair to them, so maybe we can get them here.
Well, that's...
Well, that's our intent.
That's our intent.
Let's be fair to them then.
Okay. Uh, as I said, I have a couple other items. Um, we have a problem, not a problem, a situation whereby a couple downtown tenants park overnight in the parking lot by the town hall, um, and some of the building owners park there during the day, which is fine. I think we need to pass a resolution to ban overnight parking seasonally. Uh, I'm gonna say from, uh, October first through, uh, April thirtieth each year, but to go into effect, and, and, and I'll make this a motion, to go into effect March one of this year. Um, and, uh, you know, we had, and, and, okay, so that's my motion. Do you have a second for discussion?
Second.
Okay. We just had an incident, we had a very bad storm yesterday. Guy who lives across the street in one of the apartments parked here, he, his car sits there all night, it's plowed around it. Now there is a berm, a ice and snow locking his car in the parking lot. So he tries to get it out. So he's, of course, there's other cars in the parking lot at this point, he's, you know, revving the motor, pushing, pushing, pushing. Finally, he makes it out. Well, the reason there's a berm there is because the car was parked there all night and the plows can't plow. It's not, in my opinion, it's not our job to provide parking for downtown tenants in the public parking lot overnight.
I ask this out of ignorance, but is there a downtown parking ban during that particular...
On the streets, during the streets, basically.
Yes.
What about this parking lot?
I don't know, the village owns that. I don't, there's a car bermed in there right now, so I doubt, there probably isn't. If you have a downtown apartment, you're supposed to provide parking for your tenants. And that parking isn't in the municipal parking lot. So I believe we need to put this ban in place, it needs to be put in place now, because we may get another storm in March, or tomorrow, or next week.
Next Wednesday.
What's that?
Next Wednesday.
Oh, next Wednesday, okay. Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll trust you and the weatherman about as far as I can tell either, which right now isn't very good. Um, so anyway, that's, uh, that's why I'm making a motion, it's been a problem in other years, we've never done it. Some people thought we couldn't ban parking in municipal lot, I don't buy that at all. If the village can ban parking on streets seasonally, I would think we can ban parking in a lot overnight seasonally as well. And it's just a matter of practical, matter of being practical. So. Any further discussion?
Well... What about the, uh, police vehicles?
Oh, I, I don't, not worried about police vehicle, quite honestly, I mean, that, that's, we could, we could, if you wanna make an exemption in our motion, I certainly would amend it to do that.
They're marked. They're marked, kind of. They're marked.
Well, the civilian vehicles are.
Yeah, you got the employees to park up there too.
I think, yeah, I think they do move them for the plow.
Typically, you know, like today you came in, or yesterday, or today you saw the car with all the snow around it. Typically, I think they'll go out and move their vehicles.
Yes, the employees and the police.
Cause I know Jim Beckstead moves the town pickup out of the way for them to plow, so. I think there's some people that do move them when they come in to plow.
That's their day, though. That's their day.
Well...
Well, normally it gets plowed first thing, early morning, it gets plowed.
Early, the regent is here.
So, before anybody's here.
And again, my biggest concern is the fact that tenants are supposed to have parking provided by their landlord.
Did, I, I think we had, did somebody fall last year too because of it, because we couldn't sand properly in between the, because of one vehicle was parked there, we couldn't get, somebody had slipped on the ice, somebody that worked here, I thought maybe we had somebody that had an accident last year out there.
I don't remember that, could be. So that's, and again, I'm not trying to be unreasonable or to be a hard case, it's just, I don't think it's reasonable for us to provide overnight parking for a downtown tenant when his landlord's supposed to provide parking for him. And he can't park on the street. Any other discussion?
Go ahead. It's, it's, you know, we have very limited parking here in the downtown area, and the more we start limiting it, the worse it's gonna get.
They don't park there in the summertime.
They park in the road?
The road, or maybe wherever they're supposed to park.
Out back, and where they're supposed to be parking spaces, behind the theater, behind the building.
The only time we have vehicles typically is, is in the winter months that park there. Well, that's cause during the summer they can park out on the roads.
Right, that's what I'm saying, they probably park right outside the street in the summer. I, I truly understand what you're saying, I know, I know it was a bad storm, and I know they were, I just don't wanna start limiting, uh, we got very little parking there.
When you go before the planning board, say, I wanna rent my, a house, my apartment, they say, we have parking. And that's supposed to be part of the approval process.
And you're gonna go from two AM to, what do you, what do you, what time are you gonna do it? Overnight parking, is there a limited time? Example, what if Quality Inn is booked to the max and somebody wants to park there, or? What if, uh, somebody's eating dinner, I, you're just...
I would, I would entertain, uh, two AM to, uh, to, uh, six AM hours. I'm in the motion for that. So it would be seasonal, and it would be limited overnight by time. I think the village is between two AM and, I don't know what the morning hour is, but.
I don't, that's tough one. I don't, I mean, I don't know what the village is limits of. I think it's two AM and six AM. Which half is?
Could always just state whatever the village...
Near the village, where the village is.
Can, can we, can we address this personally to them and tell them to stop parking there, and then if it become, still becomes an issue, take care of it next month, or?
If we could find them, I don't know if we're gonna do that, but.
You know what I mean, and then if we take care of this personally, to make, tell them that, you know, you, if you're a tenant, you're supposed to have a spot to park it.
I can call the landlord.
Yeah, you can call the landlord on that. If, if we know, if... Right. The landlord's not absentee. And then table it for next month, and he knows.
And if you don't, if he's just tenant. He may say, it's not my tenant.
He may. But I'd just say, I don't know how often you see him, or somebody could address this with him personally and just tell him to stop parking there for a whole reason?
I don't see, I never see him like this as well.
And I can understand your concern that them gooseing it and trying to get out of there and slide into somebody else's car too, cause that is a very narrow parking lot.
Yeah. Spaces aren't all that big in the end.
I would personally like to see, before we put this on, I'd personally like to see if we take care of this personally with the two vehicle owners, and then if we can, we'll address it again next month.
That's fine, I mean, Frank, it's just...
You good with that?
Then, then, that won't preclude anyone else from parking there, but we can try to address this one.
I'd like to see it that way, but, it's my opinion.
That's what you wanna do, we can do that. Okay, I'll call the landlord and, uh, encourage him to, encourage his tenant to, uh, find another parking space overnight for winter. And then we'll discuss it next month.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I'll withdraw the motion from now.
I withdraw the second.
Okay, uh, next up, um, this past weekend, uh, we had a booth at the Columbus, Ohio Fishing Expo. Don Meisner manned the booth, twelve thousand people went through that show and saw the display for the town of Messina and for the fishing that we do here. Uh, we'll, we'll address that at a future meeting, I'm gonna ask them to come and set up a mini version of that booth here at the beginning, so we'll see what it looked like. They will next be, I believe, in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, they will then be in Springfield, Massachusetts, and they will then be in Suffolk, New York. All three of those other shows are very big shows as well. We did Springfield last year, again, I think twenty thousand people go through that show in the weekend. So anyway, my point in bringing up, obviously, other than to let people know about it, uh, and, and I will tell you that someone expressed an interest about bringing a small number of people from their company to do a retreat, Messina, a fishing retreat in Messina. So we're gonna see if we can make accommodations for that, to do that this summer sometime. We will make the accommodations, we'll try to find them a place where they can be accommodated. Which is another challenge we're gonna have going forward with the whole fishing, outdoors, outdoors and sporting, recreational thing, but the reason I bring this up, other reason I bring this up is, when, when Meisner goes to these shows, he is typically, other than his hotel room, uh, uses his own credit card, his own resources to pay for his expenses, and then he gets reimbursed. I would like us to authorize him to use the town credit card for these upcoming three shows. Obviously, expenses only related to the booth and to his travel and his, uh, meals. Uh, he will have to provide all the receipts necessary, bring it back, those will have to meet Nancy's, meet muster with Nancy. So it's a matter of authorizing him, and, you know, other town employees use the card. Uh, matter of fact, Councilman, uh, Carboni, O'Shaughnessy, using it this weekend, used it this weekend in New York, this weekend in New York. So I'd like just to add him to the list of authorized users. He's not technically a town employee, but he's a town contractor, so I would like to, I would, uh, make a motion that we authorize him to use the town credit card for, uh, purposes related specifically to these shows, and that he permit, submit all receipts, and if, if there's expenses that he doesn't, that he does not submit receipts for, let's get that in personally now.
That's, that's probably the easier way to do it right now, so, easier for both.
I just think it's unfair to say, we want you to run up your credit card with our expenses, and we have, we'll reimburse you. In my opinion.
Will you, how, how much, this all comes out of compact money?
Yes. We budgeted forty-two thousand five hundred dollars, I believe, in this year's budget, for these shows and other, uh, fishing and recreation related expenses. We have a budget for that, a town budget, aligned with that budget for that.
Here's my concern, I have no problem with the fact that he is an agent by virtue of us empowering him to go to these things on our behalf of employee, however, uh, we got an email from, from Nancy saying that our third quarter compact money is way down, right? Is down.
Well, the county, the counties...
County.
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 Ours may be less, Al, but it's not less than we budgeted.
Okay, so we're within...
Yeah, we're okay with those.
We're okay.
We're pretty conservative in what we budget for compact money, and we're still...
We, we need to be.
Yes, I'm not that about it.
Because it'll trend.
I'm concerned about that as well.
Very concerned, so as long as we're within the capability to pay for that, I mean, we have to, we... He is acting in our behalf.
And again, he's gonna be held accountable by receipts, and...
Yeah, yeah.
What was that time?
That goes without... I asked Nancy if there was a max on these credit cards.
Oh, yeah.
There is, I believe it's ten thousand.
I don't think it's that high. I'm, I, I think I'm, mine is, I think it's five thousand.
All different.
I think?
I think the total.
The total is?
If you get ten thousand, you know.
There's nobody...
Oh, I see, it's all together?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's an aggregate of all.
Okay.
What's an aggregate?
Oh, okay, that makes sense. Yeah, maybe twenty-five hundred for cover or something like that. We have four, then three?
As long as he shows approved receipts. Oh, I'm sure he'll...
Okay, so I'll put that in the formal motion, if we have a second?
Second.
We've had some discussion already, any further discussion? All right? Are you clear on what the motion says, man? Okay. All of the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, extension, motion carries. Um, I'd also would, uh, suggest that we dispense the committee reports until next, next month, because we don't have a full board to do the report. With the exception of highway and airport, if Frank has something to add.
Um, no, I guess all I can say is that, uh, good job by the highway department crew and the airport crew for keeping roads open and keeping the airport going.
Talked to the residents last night, yesterday, and, you know, the whole day. I, I agree with Frank, it's, it's amazing how our roads turned out...
Yes.
With the, the storm that they had and the crew size they have, I don't even know if they're that full, I don't believe they are.
No.
So I'd like, thank you, Frank, and thank the, the guys.
Frank put in a ton of hours along with that, and, uh, he called me about the airport yesterday, and he sounded terrible, it sounded like he was sick, and I think he still does have a cold or something. And he was out there doing it, we appreciate that, Frank, thank you very much.
Just, uh, rescue squad, Roger and I have been talking a little bit, uh, last couple days. Uh, things are going, um, okay, they're, with their billing, they're getting better, uh, day by day. Uh, Medicaid is, that, that problem's almost fixed, should be ASAP, right?
As soon as they, they back mill.
Right. And, um, E-five, which is the new company that is on board, uh, things are going well there, they have not had one shift that wasn't covered. So we're getting full coverage for the community, uh, six AM to six PM with a level three or paramedic.
Right.
Either or, so which, that's really valuable. And just food for thought, and we'll bring it up next month, um, they're looking at, uh, reconditioning one of the, uh, ambulances to a variatic truck, which in that, they could do is they could bill for more, and they could bill to a different level because of its, the, the capabilities of this ambulance. So, uh, next month, I'll get this out to the whole board, and maybe we can look it over and act on it next month, how they wanna recondition the two-one, whatever one.
Six, eight, two-one-six.
Two-one-six to a, and which would be, right now, the rough cost is thirty-two thousand, and he's got a finance thing here, so we'll look at that. I'll get this to everybody, we'll look at it and possibly act on it next month.
That's preliminary, I mean, it could shift a little.
Right.
Sure, I, I have a problem talking about that. Um, if the E-five, uh, question is, which is a company that provides the EMT service, should that contract be with us, with the town, or with the, and the...
It's always been by our employees, so it's just...
We've done, we've done, we've never had a contract like this, Roger, so it's never, always been anything, right?
Right, but I mean, you know, it's like an employee of MBEU.
I'm not sure, Joe. It occurs to me that they're being paid with town funds, the contract might appropriate, more appropriately be with us, but... Let me, let me look at it a little bit.
All right, take a look at it, which is interesting, I think, and...
Yep.
We actually have two contracts with them.
Actually, if we're gonna look in that, look into the, uh, other contract with the Professional Building Association.
EAV, is it the same company?
No.
True, okay. Yeah, you got, P A got the ambulance, the billing, uh, company, and, and the E-five provides the, uh, EMT.
Okay.
So it's the two contracts.
Let me take a look.
Well, the volunteer, okay, good, I'd feel better if you knew what the answer was there.
That's all, that's why, I mean, I, again, you know, those guys, they're, they're helping all this kinda weather too. I listened yesterday, I monitored, and they were, they were out quite a bit, as, as well as the fire department in this weather, and I thanked them for their service too. Because it's brutal getting out there with, in the, you know, rescues, uh, rescues out in that mess traveling, and fire department had a couple of structural fires, so.
Sure, yeah, it was, uh, terrible conditions for them.
Terrible conditions, yep.
Good, Joe, can we go back to the airport in just a second?
Sure.
Uh, we got an email from, uh, Andrew Bonney, who's vice president of Cape Air. On the, uh, the claimants, they're extremely happy that our claimants are up, and I'm sorry, Bobby, I don't have the exact figures, they're, they're way up. But. I don't ha, I didn't bring it with me.
I can take an email, Bob, if you're interested.
I had it here. You're gonna get it to him?
I can.
Okay.
I might have, actually, it's you on the phone.
So that's good news.
Yeah, it's very good.
Is this what you're looking for?
Yeah. What's the number, Frank?
Uh, uh, January was, uh, three hundred and forty-five compared to two sixty-two last year.
Six forty-five.
Hmm, three sixty-five, three sixty-five, right?
Okay.
Wait a minute here, no, it's a little bit.
No, I don't think that's right.
No.
Yeah. Three forty-five this year and two sixty-two last year. So eighty more, a little over eighty more.
You'd like to, Joe, you can give it if you want to.
Weather probably played a big part in that.
Huge part, yeah.
Yeah, last, uh, last month, they only, yeah, there was only, uh, uh, two and a half, uh.
Cancellation?
Cancellation, two and a half trips.
That's amazing for January, Miss, Miss New York.
That's the one right from Cape Air, Joe.
Okay.
That's the same one Nancy gets to make her chart.
It says, uh, three forty, three hundred and forty-five in claimants, three twenty-seven in E claimants. It's over six seventy-two.
That's what.
They just look at M claimants.
Right. Which is, uh, two, three forty-five, and, yeah, that's what he adds on here, three forty-five, so. Yeah, it was a good month. You know, other Januaries looked at, that would be good too. Both weather wise and, uh, air passenger line. Okay, uh, anything else? Our next meeting will be March sixteen, five thirty. Anything else from the board?
Nothing.
Public comment? Yes, sir.
Right, Ben, uh, on the P A D. I think that's gotta stay with the rescue squad, because you know all the, probably even the reason we went through with billing for Medicare and Medicaid. So you need to really take a close look at that, because that's why we went the way we did, because of the requirements.
They are the service provider, I think that's important to know.
Right, that's.
They got, they have, they have the, uh.
Oh, I just wanna check, it's something I, I haven't put that.
No, no, but I was saying, that was under Emmy, the, under the process of Medicare or Medicaid.
They, they are, yeah. They have the, they have the E M T, the service, so they're the service provider. But again, if it's, the revenue is coming from town sources, then, um, I'm concerned that maybe there should be, there needs to be two contracts, right? One would be the service provider, and one would be owner. Okay, anything else for the public? Are you, are you public? Yeah, I guess, yes, you can.
The house that you're talking about, Martin, where is that?
It's the old Troutman House that we talked about.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I hate to keep calling that, cause they haven't owned it for three years. So it's the house that we now own, the, it's, what, what is it, uh, what's the name, Voldemort, the, the?
Are they gonna be able to, will they gonna have just transportation on the house to?
The parking lot.
What they'll do is they'll just go to the rest of one and up, one that's here already.
Talking about the one we signed at town hall, yes.
That way the game, the game, after they lock, it's inside the fence, so.
The village owns this lot, the village owns this lot. Well, the back, big back lot behind this whole block.
If we, uh, would've had, if the tactical project went on this year, we would've had, we would've wanted to bring the road.
I'm talking about just the one beside the town hall, between here and the old.
Grab the road right up to the back of the house.
Okay.
We won't win for, uh, all of it, so.
That's the one I'm talking. Okay, nothing else, anything, motion due adjourned?
Slow move, second.
Motion's in a second, all those favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are, I didn't hear it, I said thirty minutes, it's been thirty-seven, oh, man, you guys made a liar out of me.
You added two, thanks.
You added.
Yeah, you guys talked too long.